Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order, but before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the Planning Commission is a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. Decisions made on rezoning and variances requests tonight will be forwarded to the Commissioners for final action on March nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four. If you wish to address the Board of Commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Staylor to obtain a request to speak for them. Any request with public hearing will have a minimum of ten minutes per side for the presentation of opinions, data, and evidence by proponents or opponents of a request. Applicant will be allowed to speak first, and any member of the public may speak after. Either side may cede their time during the hearing if they so desire. And the pledge by Mr. Van Meter.
Well, thank you for the offer. I don't know.
Amen.
By the state, public, nation, God.
For all Commissioners present, did I get an approval for the minutes of the previous meeting?
Chairman, make a motion that we approve in minutes last meeting?
I second.
All in favor? Did I get a motion for the approval of tonight's agenda? Favor?
Butler. There, sir, these are two massage operators licenses. The first one is Megan Williams, DBA Massage by Meg, located at forty-four thirty-four Columbia Road, Suite two oh four. These are on-premise and mobile massage services. She meets all the requirements of the ordinance. That recommends approval. Are you gonna take both of them at once? Is that what you're planning to do? I mean, you can.
Let's do both at once.
Next one is Jennifer Soto, DBA Jennifer Soto Massage Therapy, twenty-five oh four Dan Street, Augusta, Georgia. It's mobile massage services only. Again, she is in Augusta. We're licensing her to do work in Columbia County as mobile massage only. That includes both mobile massage operator licenses.
Questions? Motion? Pledge? All in favor? Motion pass. Valvoline?
Yes, sir. This is an architectural review for the property at four twenty-eight Lewiston Road. The zoning is C-two general commercial, and it's for a Valvoline oil change facility, and it's to comply with the rezoning condition. Here is the property opposite the Kroger on Lewiston Road. Location is C-two, and it's the parcel that's next to AutoZone. The applicants have submitted the site plan, which is under review currently, and these are the proposed elevations. The one on the bottom there is facing Lewiston Road, and the building will be in brick with metal roof and glazed overhead doors. Here are the other elevations. Ranging of the the building, so it's primarily brick, and it's got earth tone colors. And here's an example of one that they've done in a different location. This one in on Lewiston Road that will be have a dark bronze metal roof on it. The next slide should be the finishes. Staff is recommending approval.
Any questions? Do they have a motion?
I make I make a motion to approve the architectural review for the Valvoline at at four two eight Lewiston Road.
Second. All in favor? Pass. Montgomery?
Yes, sir. This is a concept plan for Amana Village located off Old Evans Road, a currently split zoned townhouse residential and R-three, although we are just dealing with development on the townhouse residential portion of the property. This shows the location of the site on kind of the west side of Old Evans Road near the intersection with Riverwatch Parkway. And again, a large portion of the site is already zoned TR Townhouse Residential. It's been zoned that way since two thousand one. They're developing under that existing zoning. The existing conditions show quite a bit of topography on this site, as well as some existing stormwater pipes that will be removed during construction of the project. And the concept plan is for the development of sixty townhouse units on this property. You can see they're accessed by an expansion of the private road network with access to Fantasy Lane. A pretty simple kind of bisected loop road makes for some, you know, fairly neat, easy blocks, very simple layout. The grading and some of the construction details on this project will need some some further working out before they submit construction plans, but that's not required to be completed at this time. So for the the concept, we're looking at kind of the access, which is off of the private road. All the new roads will be private, and the overall layout is a simple kind of block pattern and meets all of the zoning code requirements. And staff is recommending approval.
Questions? Okay, could I get a motion?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the conceptual plan for Amana Village off Old Evans Road.
All in favor? Motion passes. Cedarvale?
Yes, sir. This is a preliminary plat for Cedarvale off Laurel Drive in the Bartram Trail subdivision. This is the location of the site, just east of William Few Parkway and north of Patriots Park. And this preliminary plat includes a total of forty-four single-family lots. Several of these lots are grouped in these kind of group quadplex groups of four. They have shared driveway easements for those groups of four lots, and then the remainder of the lots are kind of traditional front-loading, single-family lots. The minimum lot size is six thousand five hundred ninety-eight square feet with an average lot size of eight thousand four hundred and fifty-seven square feet. There is a fifty-foot buffer along the south and the west property lines, and sidewalks and street trees are provided in this section, along with the dog park there in the southwest corner and connections to the existing Greenway Trail. Staff is recommending approval of the preliminary plat.
Questions? I have a motion, please.
Chairman, I recommend approval for Cedarvale.
Second.
I second.
All in favor? Carries. Highland Lakes, Ms. Montgomery? I mean, Bird Farm Estates?
Yes, sir. This is the final plat for Bird Farm Estates off Louisville Road. This shows the location of the property on the west side of Louisville Road, north of I twenty. And the final plat is for fifteen single-family residential lots with a minimum lot size of forty-three thousand nine hundred and four square feet and an average lot size of sixty-two thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven square feet. This does meet the minimum requirements of the R-one zoning district, and the required setbacks are sixty-five feet from the center line of the road and ten feet from the side property lines and ten feet off the buffer along the rear property lines. Just under four and a half acres of open space is provided in this development, including the hundred-foot buffer with the berm that's been installed on Louisville Road per the zoning conditions. This shows the existing site, including that berm, and staff is recommending approval.
Questions? Have a recommendation, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the final plat for Bird Farm Estates off Louisville.
Second. All in favor? Carries. Highland Lakes.
Yes, sir. This is the final plat for Section Two of Highland Lakes off William Few Parkway. This shows the location of the section, south of William Few, adjacent to Magnolia Valley. And this section includes fifty-seven single-family residential lots with a minimum lot size of ten thousand and twelve square feet and an average lot size of eleven thousand three hundred and ten square feet. This does comply with the R-two zoning district. Front setbacks are fifty-five feet from the center line of the roads, and the side and rear setbacks are ten feet in accordance with that R-two zoning. And this shows the existing site, and staff is recommending approval.
Questions? Have a motion?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the final plat for Highland Lakes, Section Two, off William.
Second. Favor? Carries.
Yes, sir. This is a request for rezoning of a portion of the property at forty-eighty Gordon Highway from RA Residential Agricultural to S-one Special for the sales of farm gates and livestock equipment. This shows the location of the property on the south side of Gordon Highway, just east of the city limits of Harlem, and it is currently zoned residential agricultural, as are the majority of the surrounding properties. There are a couple commercial businesses just to the west that are zoned C-two. This shows the area of the site, a very typical kind of large lot residential and agricultural property. And the applicant's request for the rezoning is to have kind of a sales center for livestock equipment and farm gates and other items. This shows the intended use of the property with a portable building to be used as the office and then display area for the gates, barrels, feeders, et cetera, on the front portion of the property in front of the pond. There is also a proposal to add the sale of propane to the site, and that's shown there near the the tree line in the middle of the property. The applicant has already done quite a bit of work on the site towards this end. Per the applicant, he's been selling items from this property for about ten years, mostly to auctions, so kind of the expansion to selling more in-person and from the site is the the change in the business that has triggered this request. We do have obviously some some concerns with that. It has been operating without appropriate licensing. There's also quite a bit that would need to be done from a site and a building standpoint to get this compliant with county code requirements. So that is going to include submittal of an engineered site plan, as well as building permits for the the building that's there, as well as septic permitting and addition of a bathroom to to meet commercial building code requirements. Some of the concerns with this site include the buffering from the adjacent residences. It's very typical when we have commercial or industrial businesses that but residential property that we do require buffers per county code. For the S-one zoning district against RA, that is typically a thirty-foot buffer, and we are recommending that the applicant be required to install that thirty-foot buffer in this location. That could use the existing fence that you see there and just have the the landscaping installed behind that fence. In terms of future development map, this property is in the rural character area, but it is also on the Gordon Highway employment corridor. And that employment corridor is intended to allow for employment opportunities in this area without encroaching on adjacent neighborhoods with primary future land uses, including professional offices, light industrial uses, and agricultural uses. While retail isn't necessarily specifically envisioned on this corridor, the type of retail use we're dealing with here is very much in support of agricultural uses, which are envisioned in this area, both on the corridor and in the the larger rural character area. And with this being an S-one, it is restricted to just this type of business that is providing this support. So we're we're not opening this up to to any other type of retail sales other than the applicant's proposed business. With the the amount of outdoor storage on this property, it also could arguably fit the light industrial vision for this corridor. That would be an appropriate zoning district for something like this if we were not going S-one. So there is an argument for this use being located on this property on this corridor. However, staff does have several conditions. So we are recommending approval with conditions that a copy of the recorded plat showing the subdivision of the portion of the property to be zoned S-one be submitted within ninety days, that the engineered site plan prepared by the civil engineer is required. That's kind of a self-evident condition, but just to be very clear that in order for for this to move forward and and be compliant with all the county codes, there will be a site plan required. And then the condition regarding the buffer requirements, so the thirty-foot buffers to be provided along the side property lines, meeting the requirements of Section ninety dash one thirty-nine with the landscape plan, which would be included with that engineered site plan typically. And then a ten-foot landscape strip shall be provided along the Gordon Highway frontage. Again, that's a very typical requirement for a commercial business. We are, in this case, waiving the shrub requirements because the property does sit quite a bit below Gordon Highway. You're really not going to see the shrubs. They're not really going to give you any benefit in this area. So we are waiving the shrub planting requirement and just requesting that the trees that would normally be required in that landscape strip be installed. And that concludes the staff recommendation.
Hey, the the Westbrooks, would you like to come forward and speak?
On the, um...
Sorry, you gotta state your name.
Oh, right, Westbrooks. Okay. On that plan I submitted, I'm twenty-six feet off the property line with that fence that she's talking about. So I I need to have it re-zoned, I think, so I can put a privacy fence up so I can use that twenty-six feet of property. Because if I use that twenty-six feet and my thirty-foot buffer, I'm gonna be using fifty-five feet of my property at three hundred foot. That's eating up a lot of real estate that I could be using in business. So that's what I'm I'm recommending or asking if I can get permission to put a privacy privacy fence around it instead of the thirty-foot buffer. Because I'm already twenty-six feet off that property line on the on the east, on the west side of the property. And on the east side of the property, I got a thirty-foot easement all the way down that, um, property line. So I'm already thirty foot on the easement. I just don't really see where the... And and all this is just temporary for like a year and a half, and I'm gonna move it anyway. So it'd be easier for me to privacy fence.
You don't deal with temporary, um...
Yeah, I mean, application, whatever the decision, both tonight with the Planning Commission recommendation and Board of Commissioners, would be for a permanent situation, whether that's, you know, three weeks, three months, or three years, or thirty years. So, you know, they're considered permanent decisions.
Okay.
But that doesn't mean that in a year and a half, you don't move. So whether that's something that you want to take into consideration with your... Certainly, I will say that, you know, within the distance, I believe that's there's an access drive, you're trying to share a driveway.
No, that's my drive. That's my property. There's no easement on that property.
But there's a shared driveway in that twenty-six feet.
Well, somebody uses it, but they have access to use their own driveway.
Right. But what I'm saying is, is that's your driveway access.
Yes, sir.
Twenty-six feet, portion of that twenty-six feet, whatever that width of the driveway is, is there. So that's part of the reason why, I think, in addition to where your driveway is, they'll need to, they'll be looking for that buffer, and that's part of the reason...
Can we put a privacy fence along that driveway on the property line? Have somebody come out and survey it?
That's something that you, you know, the Planning Commission can certainly take into consideration. Typically, we don't. But again, that's probably as much of a a temporary as as a permanent issue. Trees are gonna grow up. They're gonna provide that, you know, height to buffer not only basic properties, but also back to Gordon Highway corridor. And it's not just the west side. It's also that east side where there also is another driveway over there, residential use. And that's, I certainly understand what you're saying. I think, you know...
What we're doing makes very little noise. Now, she said we had complaints from our neighbors. My neighbors have not complained to me at all. They said they hadn't complained to nobody. Whether that's true or not, I don't care. You know what I'm saying? But I just, you know, the way I'm looking at it, it would be a lot better with a privacy fence.
If you build a privacy fence, you've got plans to take it down in a year and a half?
Well, I can either leave it there and take it down. It don't really matter. I mean, for what little bit of noise we making there, which ain't much of nothing.
Right.
I mean, to me, you know, I was just using common sense when I put the first fence up. But I mean, I'm, hey, I'm not above tearing that fence down and putting another fence up.
Right.
I mean, I can take that one down, you know, just as good as I can put another one up. But I didn't, you know, I came to the county looking for a business license. They didn't come to me. So, you know, when soon as I came, everybody said, well, we know you've been doing that. Why didn't somebody come out there and stop me, you know, for ten years, you know?
Or at least half.
Wait a minute. But what what I'm saying is, I came down looking to do the right thing. And I'm not asking those special favors, but, you know, what I've been able to read up on, I think the privacy fence should...
Now, how is a typical privacy fence? Eight feet?
I can build it eight, six, ten, twelve, whatever you want me to. But I wouldn't, you know, I would like, if I'm gonna do this, I would like to put it on the property line or either two foot off or like that. I mean, I I have about ten customers a week, make very little noise. So it's not like, you know, I'm running a Dollar General or Walmart there where there's people coming in and out every day.
My name's John Hare. This goes to like the ten customers a week. Does that mean that there still needs to be a bathroom in that building? Nobody's gonna be in that building?
I I don't mind putting a septic tank down. I'll do whatever they tell me to. I'm just dealing with this property line. Well, I'm just letting you know, this is my deal. Let me take care of it. I don't mind doing the bathroom. I don't mind building the office. That building there, that's not the office. She said it was gonna be the office. That's not the office. That's just the store parks in. There won't be no customers going inside that building. If I need to build a brick and mortar middle, a brick building, I can do that. If I need to put the bathroom in, I can do that.
What we'll be voting on is what was presented.
Yes, sir. I understand. Yeah, well, I approached her a couple of days ago about the privacy fence. So I knew she had already put all this in. So I was just, you know, I've been down there multiple times in the last month and a half trying to make sure I had all my ducks in a row, what I thought I knew what I'm talking about. So...
Pull back up the photo that shows the actual number.
Ninety percent of this stuff goes to auctions. I I haul it off myself.
In relation to that fence that goes down the driveway there?
Yes, sir.
Where are we talking? Where would that landscape buffer go? That would go on the left side of that fence?
He wants to go inside the fence.
Challenge would be, um, because the property line is reference to the picture, right of that driveway, property line is twenty-some feet to the right there, no place to plant a buffer between the property line and that wooden fence that you see in the street.
And I thought, and I thought the same way. That's why I thought a privacy fence served a better purpose. I wouldn't have to use the real estate to where I need to store my product at. There it is, about four foot.
About four, okay.
You know, and I don't...
Just for reference purposes.
Maybe y'all can explain to me what a buffer is? You know, I'm thinking something solid where you can't see, look through it or whatever. Thirty foot, you know, that's eating up all, that's all we passed that little building there. That little building's eighteen foot off that fence. So you're talking about going halfway side of that building to make a thirty foot. Now, we can go out there, measure it. We can have somebody do the site plan, however you want to do it. I can move that building if you want to. That's not gonna be the office anyway.
Other questions? Thank you.
All right.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak opposed to this request?
There are way to reduce the landscape buffer width as opposed to going to a privacy fence.
Yes, you could modify the conditions if they're proposed to have a different width on it.
And just for everybody's benefit, whatever the recommendation is, for or against or, you know, as presented, proposed conditions or modified proposed conditions, Board of Commissioners will have an opportunity to accept or modify those, that recommendation. Just so that everybody knows that, regardless of whatever comes out tonight, there will be another decision by the Board of Commissioners. Final one.
Yes, sir.
In Columbia County, is there any kind of, um, home-based business when you're dealing with agricultural supplies?
Not for sales like this, no.
Okay. I was told yesterday to make sure I asked that question because it's supposed to be in, I guess, your handbook or whatever. I mean, if you've got a home-based business, you're dealing with agricultural supplies or equipment, it's supposed to fall on a different category. See, that's what I asked for, was home-based business. They told me that I needed S-one. I don't even, I still don't know what S-one means. But, um, you know, I want to do a home-based business because we do everything out of our house. This is the only office equipment I need. I don't need a desk or chair, everything on our phone.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, they tell me to build office, I'll build office. But...
Then we do auction?
Yes, sir. What I don't care to auction, I deliver ninety-five percent of everything there on the yard. So I have very limited, I mean, very few people come. It's more of a benefit for the community than it is. They can come to my place and buy it for a hundred dollars less than they can down the road. That's what the people like.
Okay, so you do so.
Yep. So far, you know, we got our business license, not our business license. We got a retail license. We hadn't started using it yet because we want to get all this straight before our business license. I'm just trying to fix all this legally before I go. Wife's a lot younger than me. I'm sure I'm gonna go first, and I'm just trying to get it set up for her. So, but do you you guys know if there is a agricultural, anything different with agricultural supplies?
We do have agricultural uses in our code, but it's more the, you know, grazing of cattle or crops or things of that nature. It's not gonna apply to the retail sales of the equipment like like what you're doing. That's not considered an agricultural use.
Well, I I believe what you're telling me. But are you a hundred percent sure that's what it reads?
I am.
Okay. That's all for me.
Thank you, sir. Get a motion?
Commissioner, I make a motion to recommend approval of conditions of RG twenty-four oh three oh one rezoning of plus or minus four acre portion of property at forty-eighty Gordon Highway from RA to S-one for the sale of livestock equipment.
A second.
Chairman, a second.
All in favor? Motion carries?
Before we leave that, does that, so with, really, they can get an answer on your privacy fence? So that, so does it have to...
Ask the Commissioner. They could, he can...
So, so the the answer to that is, is that the the privacy fence was not part of the original recommended conditions. That was what the motion in the second was for and the recommendation by the Planning Commission. So at this point, the privacy fence is not a consideration for the Board of Commissioners now. They can certainly modify or make their own decision whether they want to keep the conditions as recommended by the Planning Commission, or they can certainly modify any or all of them. So Planning Commission did not choose to put the privacy fence condition in there as opposed to the thirty-foot buffer.
But he can, he can...
But he can still have that conversation. That that would be handled with the Board of Commissioners, so you would need a request to speak for him to be on the agenda to speak at the, um...
May nineteenth?
March nineteenth? March nineteenth? Right, yeah. March nineteenth, BOC meeting. It'll be right here at six o'clock. Yeah, you will. We'll get you a form here, and then we'll get, we'll get you that request.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Douglas, variance?
Yes, sir. This is an application for variance at four oh three Beverly Road. This shows the property near the intersection of Bel Air Road and Wheeler Road. Um, could I go back to that last slide? Sorry. Um, this application actually stems from the desire of the property owner to build out the open space that you see kind of to the northwest within the the parcel. Again, it's a the area that isn't built out, but looks like there could be a building fit in there. They want to expand on their property. They have to bring it into compliance with code. As it stands now, it could continue to operate just as it has been in a non-conforming status. So this expansion of their business is what sort of initiated this application. The reason that the property has come into non-compliance is, or non-conformity, sorry, is, if you see here, the property to the southeast of this parcel was rezoned in two thousand nineteen to C-three heavy commercial. Whilst adjacent C-two properties only have three-foot setbacks from one another and no buffer requirement, C-three and C-two properties have... C three and C two properties have twenty-foot setbacks and buffer requirements from each other. And so that two thousand nineteen zoning change for the adjacent parcel has impacted this parcel now and is the subject of this variance application. This shows a close-up area of the property. Again, this open space to the northwest is where they're proposing the new building. But the subject of the application is the southeasternmost lot line abutting, where you see some parking and a paved drive aisle that we'll zoom in on a little bit more here in a moment. This shows the existing site. This shows the future development map. It's within Activity Center. It's the plat for the property that shows that the drive, paved drive aisle here onto the plat right side, the drive aisle, now those parking spaces that are in the subject buffer area now have been in place for some time, given that they're recorded on the plat. This is the site plan. Again, as you can see, all site changes are proposed for the northwestern area of the lot as opposed to the southeasternmost area where the buffer is now required. Through their submission for these plans, the applicant, their plans were reviewed both by our Plan Review Department as well as all of our reviewing departments, both that look at those submissions and also this variance application. And through both reviews, none of the county offices have, you know, found any issue with their request. Beyond that, the biggest issue, as shown here, the blue highlighted areas, the proposed, roughly the proposed twenty-foot buffer area. As you can see, if they installed the landscape buffer, they would be doing away with their paved drive aisle, which helps them access that parking there. Part of what we review variances for are, you know, denial of reasonable use of property. In this case, a drive aisle and parking could be considered reasonable use of that property. Additionally, again, these two properties have existed adjacent to one another for many years now and since two thousand nineteen with the zoning change to the adjacent property without any issues. Neither property has adversely impacted one another. And when that two thousand nineteen rezoning went through, there was a companion variance to this exact same code and this exact same twenty-foot buffer for the property to the southeast. And they received relief from that buffer requirement so that they could maintain a paved drive aisle there. Again, that doesn't have as much bearing on the decision for tonight's application as the fact that they have not adversely impacted their neighboring properties and this is probably reasonable use of their property. And in light of those facts, staff is recommending approval of their application. This is the exact area that we've been talking about that is subject to the buffer change. And again, staff is recommending approval of this application.
Thank you. Your Don Kelly, applicant Alexandra Reynolds, would you like to come forward and speak on behalf of your request?
I don't, oh, my name's Alexandra Reynolds, twelve ninety-six Broad Street. I don't have anything to add. I think you presented it. But if you have any questions, I can answer them.
Any opposed like to come forward? Thank you. Recommendation?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for the BA two four dash zero three dash zero two variance to the Section ninety dash one thirty-nine to weigh the twenty-foot structural buffer at four zero three Beverly Road.
Second? All in favor? Carries? Okay, Mr. Butler?
Sheriff's request for a rezoning of C one. Look, this one used for a convenience store, fuel pumps, property located at fifteen thirty-five Appleton Harlem Road. The applicant has requested to postpone this request because it was advertised. We're going to go through the public hearing and everything for it. We'll move on forward with it. Location of the property, again, north of I twenty, basically opposite the access to Alliance Drive. Waduk Business Park. And currently zoned RA. It has property to the north, zoned S one for a church. And again, across the street is primarily M two, which is all for Waduk Business Park. But to the south is for the northern portion of Greenpoint. Here's our view of the site. You get about two acres. Dissing side itself and the plat of the property. The overall concept plan, we'll be seeing a variance for that that kind of highlights that some of the, the lines on here, that show different ones. Again, it shows a proposed convenience store with, with fuel pumps. Does include diesel on it as well. Again, we'll be looking to probably postpone this. From a use standpoint, it meets the requirement, or meets the future land use map. There is some issue or some question, we'll say, maybe not necessarily issue, with the, basically this area here. So one of the things that was brought up with it is that if someone is leaving Alliance Drive, there's not a lot of space or there's not enough area to block off someone turning left, basically coming down and doing that if they wanted to. So that was brought up as being a concern. We were working with both G dot and the applicant on kind of how to address that issue. That has not been decided yet. So again, it's one of those, it's probably good that it was postponed or is requested to be postponed. Again, it's one that from a land use standpoint, it makes some sense. Again, there is that small issue with the traffic side of things. Needs to be worked out. But again, applicant is requesting to postpone this request to the March twenty-first Planning Commission meeting. Includes staff recommendation.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on behalf? Zoning? Unopposed? Your motion?
Mr. Butler, I see in the comments where the sheriff's department raises some concern with traffic safety, the location. How typical is that of sheriff's department?
On commercial applications, not real typical. We've gotten them, for instance, we've gotten on another, another convenience store. This is one, this is a couple of years ago. They were basically commenting that it actually needed to be open twenty-four hours because they've had too many calls to it. But again, it's not real common to have sheriff contact us directly with saying, "Hey, I got concerns about this." So again, that is unusual with commercial resettings.
Recommendation? Postpone?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to postpone RZ twenty-four dash oh three dash oh two rezoning of property at fifteen thirty-five Appleton Harlem Road from RA to C one with conditional use for gas pumps to March twenty-first Planning Commission meeting.
Okay. Favor? Finally, Will?
Yeah, this is a request for variance, Section ninety-one forty-seven, ten B two I, use provisions to decrease building separation from residential properties part of fifteen thirty-five Appleton Harlem Road. We already know the location of it. It's currently zoned RA. And here will be the site, dissing site, plat. So on the concept plan, a, so a convenience store is part of the use provisions. You do have a requirement that anything that's basically a building has to be a hundred feet from any property that is zoned residential. The applicant has very kindly put, you know, a drawing that shows where that would be. Basically, this thing is unusable if you do have that requirement in place for the proposed use itself. So they are requesting to reduce that down to the fifty feet that you see on both sides here. That allows them to accommodate all of their structures needed. Again, that's how they would be able to use it for the, for the, for the use itself. Again, they're asking to get rid of it. So it's one that, you know, they're basically locking in this design is pretty much what they're going to have to do if it is, if it is reduced down to fifty feet. Again, same issue as before. It's been requested to postpone it. So we're recommending to postpone the variance as well.
Is there anyone in the audience in favor of this would like to come speak? Audience opposed to this request? Motion?
Chairman, I make a motion to postpone BA two four dash oh three dash oh three variance to Section ninety dash one forty-seven to reduce the building separation of residential properties for proposed gas station at fifteen thirty-five Appleton Harlem Road to the March twenty-first Planning Commission.
Second? Favor? And I have a motion?
Chairman, I make a motion.
Motion carries? All in favor?